Call the meeting to order at six thirty-two. Well, welcome, everybody. And so here we are, our first Administration and Finance Committee meeting of 2021. And happy new year to everybody. And I just think I've said hello to everybody except for Chief and maybe Mr. Shaw. Happy new year.
Thank you, sir.
So item number two on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And do I have someone to move approval of the agenda?
So moved.
And a second, a second there, please.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll take Counselor Dela Baugh there. So moved and seconded that the agenda be approved as presented. Those in favor? Motion is carried. Item number three is disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this evening?
No.
No disclosures, all right? And item number four is business arising from the previous meeting, which was a meeting held on, meeting held on December the seventh. Seems like a year ago.
That's much.
No. Is there any business arising?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
On page five of fifty-two, about Total Ranch Road, east of Bounty Road, North Grenville may be able to be the project lead. The staff would discuss the request with North Grenville. Has anything been done like that, Mr. Mayor?
To the CIO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our staff has contacted North Grenville, and I believe that the operations department are going to meet on this road and do an evaluation and see and develop some type of plan. I'm not sure how much would come forward in 2021 or not, but get something moving forward on this particular road.
And they're going to lead on that, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Sorry?
Are they gonna, they're gonna lead on that, Mr. Mayor? Do you have it, the CIO?
So that hasn't, that hasn't been finalized yet. They'll, they'll meet and discuss and determine what, which township would be in the better position to be the lead.
Thank you.
When will the meeting take place?
I'll defer to the Director of Operations if the date's been set yet or not.
Through the chair, dates haven't been set yet. Just with COVID stuff, there was a suggestion from North Grenville to actually meet on the site and try and get a better scope with the both road supervisors from both townships and kind of get a holistic view of what needs to be done and things possibly we can do this year.
Okay. Any other business arising from the minutes?
Yes.
Counselor?
Yes, on page six of fifty-two and actually page seven of fifty-two as well, regarding the rewording of the water levy, the two dollar and the three dollar charge was recommended. We reworded him for the council meeting. It wasn't in the December council meeting. I was just wondering when that will be coming forward.
Through the mayor, the thought was that we would bring that back forward at the January eighth Public Works Departmental Services meeting just to confirm the wording, make sure everybody's comfortable, and then it would come forward at the January twentieth council meeting.
Okay. So it'll be on the agenda for next week?
It'll be on next week's agenda, yes.
Okay. And I believe that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Any other business arising?
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one more.
Go ahead.
Regarding the, this would be on page ten of fifty-two, regarding the full-mounted garbage receptacles in the village of Carroll. Any word on those? I know the delivery time was five to six weeks, but I'm just wondering if there's been anything?
Yes, through the, through the mayor, those receptacles have, have now arrived. And I'll be speaking with the Mr. Spencer to determine the location for those three, those three receptacles. But hopefully they'll be up within the next week or two.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Anyone else? Okay. Hearing nothing, hearing no further. I'm about to move on. And we have item number five, no delegations or presentations this evening. So I'm moving to item number six, which is the Tarpeen Farms cannabis facility letter. And I had asked that the letter be included in the package as a reminder to everyone. You can see the content of the letter. And you will remember that at the previous meeting, I indicated that I would like to take a position, like the council to take a position against the, against the possible application that these folks are going to make. Now, what I'm looking for here is actually a consensus that number one, the mayor be authorized to contact this responsible person and have a discussion with him. I'd like to try to persuade him to try to find a higher and better use for that building. I think there is one. And a quicker, a quicker use. And then the second thing, I'd like to have a consensus around the table that the mayor will write a letter to the appropriate federal agency indicating our, our nonapproval of this building for this use in this location at this time. So can I have some discussion on those two matters, please?
May I go ahead? May I start?
Yep.
Why? Why would we, why would we not want it?
Just because I don't think it's going to be appropriate in the neighborhood.
We already have one.
Yeah, but not in such close proximity to the, to the new use that's going into the neighborhood right next door.
You mean the car dealership?
Yeah, the car dealership.
They may be, they may be his best customer. He'd go over there on a bad day.
The other thing is, I think that this, the other thing is, I think that these people will spend a lot of time spinning their wheels.
Well, they're not going to make, they're, they're not going to make the submission until July. I, I, I'm just a little confused, Mr. Mayor, because we do have a pre-edit price system. And, you know, we've already got one in the, in the township. And, and I've heard nothing negative regarding that one. And it's within a kilometer of this building. I guess, I guess what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, I, I would really like to have a little more convincing.
Go ahead.
I, I, actually, I'm, I'm with, oh, whoa.
What was that?
That's the second chair.
Ah, you got it.
I got the chair.
You want to die yet?
What, you're ready?
I thought I was up the white.
Are you okay?
Oh, I thought I was up the white.
I, I'm just confirming everybody's heart and okay. My, my chair. My, my apologies.
Thought we were overdoing it first.
Getting back to that, Mr. Mayor, is like, yeah, we just can't, you know, say we don't want, want them. I mean, without any discussion, I think it's great to see if somebody wants to. That business been vacant for, that building been vacant for how many years? Be nice to see it spruced up and that lovely smell going by every so often.
Well, there won't be any lovely smell. That's guaranteed because the, the standard that the, that the federal government requires is that there be no emissions at all. And by the way, this is just for cultivation. It's, they're not processing.
Anyways, I would like, I'm like Mr. Kim, I'd like a little bit more information before you go and try to, you know, convince him that we don't want, want them in our township.
Well, don't you think there's a higher and better use for that piece of property?
Well, we'll see. I mean, if you, if you can get a higher and better use for it and bring it back to us, but just to say, no, we don't want this guy in our township, I, I disagree. So I like a little bit more information. Show me, in other words, show me where the money is.
Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to draw your attention to that, to that building. Just re, re, rev history. When I retired in two thousand and one, in two thousand and two, I realized that I, something has to be done. Otherwise, I was going to go start raving mad. So I was looking at opening a, a detail shop in that, in that building. And at that time, it was owned by Willie Kowalczuk. And I was all ready to go. I had a man hired, all, all ready to go. The building was vacant way back then. And then my man decided to move to Montevideo or something. So that killed that. But that building, that building's been, been empty since at least two thousand and two. I know, I know the paper was in there briefly, but.
No, not that building.
Not that building. The one, the one west of it.
I thought it was the small strip mall.
Yeah, it is.
This is small strip mall?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, is the paper in there?
There was, for a while, there was a press or something in there.
No, 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 the press is in the back.
No, 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 it was previously in that strip mall.
Okay.
Two, through the mayor to the CIO. So I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm all in favor of it. My only question would be, does it comply with, with our official plan? And would there need to be any zoning bylaw changes or, or exemptions or anything like that for it to go where they're, where they're asking it to go?
Well, that's beyond our, these, these buildings are beyond the scope of our bylaw. We are not allowed to regulate them. We don't, we have no say.
So I, 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 I do believe it would require zoning bylaw amendment similar to, I believe, Purple Farms at the time.
That, that was a, that was a site plan agreement. It's subject to a site plan agreement, but I don't think it's subject to zoning.
I, 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 I'd have to confirm that.
Okay, I'd appreciate getting confirmation. Okay. So I'm not getting any warm and fuzzies here.
Mr. Mayor, the only comment I have, and I can see the sign over in the highway every time I go by, is that the industry doesn't seem to be rocketing the way everybody thought it would when they announced it would be legalized. And we have that building over in the old Bingo Center that is in the similar type of business. And this is kind of a glass storefront operation. And if they're only going to distribute, you wonder like how many, how many businesses of that nature are you going to collect in the, in that industrial park area, even though it's not part of the park like that? It's, it's, to me, it's questionable. Like, can they make the thing go? It's not our role to see the business plan and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, it's, I think it's a bit of a, you're out in the limb type of thing. But I can't see any reason why we would object to letting them go ahead and start. He can fail. And then we're back to square one again, I guess.
Well, and that's, that's my point exactly. First of all, just a little bit of history on the building. The building has been owned for a long, long time by Rob Thompson. And I've spoken to Rob about it several times. During the period of time that he owned it, he sent several of these letters to council indicating to council that he was going to be proceeding to turn that building into a marijuana roll-off operation. And he spent the better part of three to four years pursuing that objective, if I can put it that way. And he, he very quickly, not, not very quickly, because he has a number of other initiatives underway, but he came to the conclusion that the building, that the renovations that he would have to make to the building, just, it was the wrong thing to do with the building. And so he put the building for sale. And these people bought it with the intention of following the same path. Now, during the period of time that Rob had the building and that we were getting these letters from council where he was telling us that he was going to proceed in this direction, I had at least three inquiries from people that wanted to use that building for other purposes. And in each case, I did two things. I, first of all, referred them to Rob Thompson. But then, secondly, I phoned Rob Thompson and told him that there were people that had other interests in the building, that they did have concrete plans, and that they would like to speak to him about a possible purchase. In every single case, he said, no, no, Pat, I'm going to go ahead with my plan. I'm sure I can turn it into a marijuana grow-up. It's just going to take me more time. That went on for about three or four years until he put the building for sale last fall. I didn't even know that it was for sale until the Tarpeen Farms sign went up. And I said, Rob, tell me what the story is here. Do you still own that building? Has it actually been sold or what? He said, Pat, this, this rich doctor from Montreal bought the building from me. This Hussein Vedong, who signed this letter, is his brother. They think that they can make it happen. But he said, I can tell you one thing right now, they're going to spin their wheels for six months. It's not going to happen. They're going to spin their wheels for a year and it's not going to happen. So that's why I would like to at least talk to these folks and say to them, listen, if I get an opportunity, and we were having people phoning quite frequently, if I get somebody phoning me, I'd like to be able to refer them to you. And I'd like you to really consider whether your plans are the right use for this building. Notice that they're giving themselves until July to make the application. I think that they would appreciate knowing what's actually happening in the township here. I don't, I, I just felt that I didn't really want to get into a discussion with them without council knowing what I'm doing.
Well, that operation down the road from them, I mean, they, the owners there bought that other piece of land with a view of expanding. And there's been nothing done that grabbed the land, okay, but no building. And you got to wonder like, is, are things following their, the track of their business plan?
Because. Well, here's the thing. We did meet with those folks. And we actually toured that building, I think it was November or, or, yes, I think it was, it was November. And we put that question to them. You haven't, you haven't followed through with developing that other two acres the way you promised us.
They missed the deadline, didn't they?
Yes, several. And they've said to us, well, the reason was, we were halfway through the process of applying when the government changed the rules. And the government changed the rules in the following manner. They used to give them their licenses and then inspect the premises when the premises were ready. They changed that now completely. The way it works now, you do all the work to the building before you apply for your licenses. So you spend your half million dollars. And when we toured that old Bingo Hall, you can see that they've spent a lot of money in there. After you've completed that, then you can apply. So when we toured it, they showed us all the work that they had done. They've done the final inspection, the government's done the final inspection. And on the date that that, that we were touring the building, they told us they expected to get their final licenses about mid-December. Now, whether they've gotten those licenses or not, I don't know. But I have seen an awful lot of construction activity there in the two weeks, in the week just prior to Christmas and just after Christmas. So I'm thinking that maybe their license finally did come through. But they still had probably two months' work to do inside in the, in the form of installing equipment. The building had been all renovated, but the equipment wasn't in place. So I think the people down the road will eventually be in business. But I don't know that. Okay, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. If I do get it, I'm going to tell council right now. If I get an opportunity to talk to this guy, I'm going to talk to him. If I can persuade him to entertain offers from other, other would-be purchases, I'm going to, I'm going to do that. I'm hoping that, and now, mind you, maybe it'll work faster. He may even find somebody, you know, through his own initiative. Okay, so I'm moving on. And I'm at seven eighty. And seven eighty is the council response to the auditor. And you can see the, the draft in, in your package here. It's dated January the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. And there's a recommendation that council recommends that, committee recommends that council authorizes the mayor to sign the draft response letter to the auditors as a requirement for the annual audit. Is there any discussion on this item? I haven't had an opportunity to compare this letter with last, last year's letter, but I think it's been modeled along the same lines. And the, and the reason I'm looking for this recommendation is so that the responsibility rests with all of council, not just the mayor. So discussion? Go ahead, I'm looking for a mover and a second there, then to actually the recommendation.
I'll move.
Okay, well, I have Deputy Mayor DeShawn moving and Counselor Cameron seconding. And no further discussion, I'll call the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, and so now I'm on to eight, seven B, which is the high-interest saving account. And that seems to be becoming an oxymoron. The account interest changing from point nine percent to, apparently, point seven percent. Is that correct, to the treasurer?
Point one.
Sorry, again.
Point one, six, five.
Point one.
Non-existent.
So the, the best that we can get is point one?
Within LAS, with, with the One Investment Program, yes.
So I checked today, the best that I could find today was point three.
The recommendation is to move to the, to the Royal Bank, which is, is point seven.
Oh, I see, okay. So that's the recommendation, yeah.
Correct.
All right, so best I can find today is point three. And this is offering point seven in the recommendation. Any further discussion, questions to the treasurer? Okay, go ahead. You got your hand up?
Okay. Through the mayor to, to treasurer, the Royal Bank over Scotiabank, just because of the ease and, and, you know, having, you know, everything in one place?
Not specifically. The, the reason with the Royal Bank is that the, even though the savings account with Scotiabank is more, they couldn't guarantee that dependent on the prime rate. And with Royal Bank, we have a banking agreement. So that, that, that rate is a little bit more fixed. And we have a little more negotiating factor with the, with the Royal Bank.
To, to fix the rate?
Yes.
So is this fixed? Bradley, did you want in here?
The point seven is fixed without, within our banking agreement.
And how is it paid?
Paid monthly.
And so the driving criteria is that we feel we want access to that money should something arise. Is that correct?
The recommendation is based on that premise, yes. That if council needs that money, that it's more readily available. And the other aspect is that it's the best earning rate at the moment.
Yeah.
Without getting locking, locking that money up.
Have we ever drawn from that account since it was set up?
The high-interest savings account? No.
So the premise has never had to be executed.
That would, that, that would be correct at this time.
Okay, back to Deputy Mayor.
I don't see in, like, so we want to put it into a high-interest savings account with, like, there's, like, we're just going to put it in and want to leave it in that, that same one? There's no expiry or time, time limit for leaving it in there?
Correct. Right now, it's being actually not moved into a high-interest savings account. It's actually just within the Royal Bank's consolidated reserve account.
Okay. And, and so no, no, sorry.
Then?
So can we, sure, I'm okay with, with this. But can we review it again in case, you know, I mean, situations change? And I'm sure you already planned that. But we're just, you know, thinking that we had better options before. You know, can we consider those options again, you know, in a, in a year's time or something like that? Be reasonable?
Through the chair, I would suggest that I'm going to bring back any, if there's any foreseen changes in the rates with RBC even, or, or around, keep searching to see what kind of rates are, are happening out there. If, see if LAS has a rebound on theirs. Pandemic is really having havoc on, on borrowing and lending rates both ways. You know, you can borrow well and you don't get much if you put it in a way, put it in. But yeah, the, the intent is if, I'll be monitoring the market to make sure that the, the rate is, is the best for this particular bit of money.
Good.
So we're not locked in?
No, definitely not locked in.
Okay, so I'm looking for a mover and a second here to, to Counselor Hunter. And Deputy Mayor DeShawn, seconding. No further questions, about to call the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And so now I'm at item number seven C, which is the minutes of settlement for Ingredian Canada. And you have the briefing note in front of you there. You see that they're expecting, treasurer's expecting that the township will do a refund of thirty-seven thousand in township, tax dollars refunded. The county will have to refund twenty-one thousand odd. And the education refund will be eighteen thousand nine. Total refund will be seventy-seven thousand five thirty-two oh six. Minutes of settlement have been, apparently, I think I see the signatures, yes, signed by the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation and signed by the, the representative of the Ingredian agent. So all major corporations have these agents now that appeal their taxes on, or appeal their assessments on a regular basis. I don't know how long this one's been hanging fire. I didn't, I wasn't even aware of it, I can't remember it. God, once it been hanging fire.
Well, through the chair, typically, these higher assessments than, and Ingredian is what they call one of the special purpose properties within Ontario. They typically have a four-year lifespan of, of going through the cycle of appeal. So the last time I looked back, we, we issued a refund in twenty-seventeen for the prior four years.
We did.
So, yeah, and it was much larger.
It was large?
Yeah. When I did a review of it, the total refund back in twenty-seventeen was two hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. And the township refunded eighty-two, one eighty-eight, forty-five of that.
So that's the reality of today. Now, I always have two questions regarding these. As, when these people appeal their assessments, or when these agents appeal the assessments, we have a, a right to fight them, to argue the case. And generally, that's done through Dave Pablo at the counties. Now, was Dave involved with this one?
Dave had notice of this particular appeal back in June of twenty-nineteen.
June of twenty-nineteen?
Mm-hmm.
And so was there discussions or was there a hearing or?
No, it would have been done in a mandatory settlement meeting between the, between the NPAC and the appellant. And in this case, the representative of the, of the appellant.
Okay, so was, was, was either the county or the township involved in the mandatory settlement meeting?
Not this particular one, no.
Not this one? Was there grounds or do we know? Sometimes there's just no grounds to fight these changes of use and things like that.
Yeah, basically, from Dave and, Mr. Pablo and myself have had conversation with respect to this, these particular minutes. And basically, the, if you look back, it's a twenty-sixteen CVA actually increased. It decreased from, from the twenty-twelve. But there was an omit that was added. And it increased, but it was just the way that the apportionment, so there's three different classes, IT, CT, and LT. And just the way that they reapportioned the assessment has created this refund.
Okay, so the reapportion that caused it?
Yeah.
Okay, does everybody understand what happens there?
Yeah, I have one comment. I think that we don't control the assessment. The assessment's done by NPAC.
Yes, but we can fight them.
Yeah, I, I understand that. But NPAC are the ones that have the parameters that determine what the assessment is.
Yep.
Okay, so maybe NPAC should get off their butts and go out and talk to these companies and say, here's the kind of plan, and do enough inspections that we don't have to go through this rangoon. Because this costs us money, not only the thirty thousand, but the staff's time keeping records and updates and going to meetings and having discussions. but the staff's time keeping records and updates and going to meetings and having discussions. It's really a pile of junk, as far as I'm concerned, when the source of the problem is NPAC. Like, I think we should be writing them letters or something, saying, you guys better get your act together because you're creating these problems, not only for this municipality, but I'm sure for others. I mean, what was it, Jimmy Tiger, we had the big one there a couple of years ago?
Last year.
Last year.
Last year. Yeah, and, well, it seems like a couple of years ago. But, you know, I think if we just sit idly by and let this kind of go on and on and on...
Well, yeah, but we don't, because through AMO and through all of our provincial organizations, the same message has been sending, we've been sending the same message to NPAC for a number of years. What happens, I mean, obviously, the agent for Ingredian has appealed this as soon as the 2017 assessments were mailed out. And why they dragged so long, you know, as the chair, as the treasurer has indicated, I don't know why they dragged so long, but they seem to drag and drag and drag. I don't know, do we have any others pending other than this one?
We actually do, currently, we have Greenfield Ethanol, who's in an appeal for the same timeframe.
For the same timeframe? From back to 2017?
Correct.
They're appealing for a year or so.
It's standard practice, right?
Yeah.
Standard practice, yeah.
Okay.
And I've personally gone through home requests for reevaluation. And that took eight, maybe eight and a half months. I mean, it's a simple thing. This is ridiculous.
Yeah, did you get before the Assessment Repeal Board?
No, I didn't have to go that far.
You negotiated it?
Well, the way they worked it out, they finally adjusted the assessment, and it was agreeable to me and to him, so we...
It was a negotiated settlement?
Yeah, yeah.
And apparently, that's what's happened here on the basis of a mandatory negotiation meeting. Okay, so then, all that's left for us to do is to basically action the recommendation here. Did you have another question?
Um, no, I'll let it go.
Okay, so I'm looking for a mover in a second here to action this recommendation. Okay, Mr. Bradley, is there a seconder?
Yes.
I'll take Counselor Dillawong. Further discussion, if any? Hearing done, about the call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And now, I'm on item number 7D, the Truck 2 maintenance issues. I have a briefing note in front of you here, which provides a little bit more detail than we had at our recent meeting. We had asked for more information about Truck 2. So, the briefing note here provides a lot of additional information. I see that there doesn't seem to be a recommendation with this. Comments, discussion, if any? Go ahead, Counselor.
Yes, first of all, is this a gas or diesel?
It'd be diesel.
It's diesel, okay, and it's $4,000, I read here, for the turbo. And we use it about approximately 23,000 kilometers a year, based on the current mileage, with the age.
23,000?
Yes. That may be just slightly high, it's 22.6 or something. But, I mean, even at 317,000, that's not a whole lot of mileage for a diesel. Mr. Mayor, I think my recommendation, or not recommendation, but my idea would be to spend the 4,000 and keep the truck moving. We, the expense, yes, we have had some expense, but 5,000 of the expense was a box. And injectors, injectors for, you know, whether it's a car or a truck, they're going to be expensive. I guess we had to replace all of them, but whatever, it was still $5,000. But other than that, the maintenance has been kind of minimal, and I'd just like to hear a little more from staff regarding it. If we put 4,000 more dollars into it, I mean, that's an awful lot cheaper than 55,000. I mean, and in the rate up, it doesn't sound like it gets a lot of heavy use. I mean, hard use. Just taking that into consideration, Mr. Mayor, I think 4,000 dollars would be better spent than 55,000. Just my opinion, I just wanted to express that.
So, 5,000, the major expenses were 5,597 for the box, and 5,152 for the injectors, and it needs another 4. Is that, have I got that understood correctly?
If you look on the backside of that page, it's been 2020, they've spent 16,000.
Altogether, yeah.
In 2020?
Yeah. 2020, yeah.
Like, it's not just 4,000. Oh.
Well, yes, you're absolutely right, but another 4,000 dollars as opposed to a brand-new truck.
So, that's 20,000, so in one year, we've probably spent 40% of a brand-new vehicle.
So, we got 40% better truck?
Kind of where it all is, I'm hard to hear.
Yeah, that's true, you're right there, but again, with being a, being a tight year, that's just my...
Well, there's that aspect of it, too.
What else can go wrong with a vehicle? Like, if we put this into the turbo, is there any else on that vehicle?
Yeah, the transmission.
You got a 25,000 dollar motor.
There's transmission, there's motor.
If you look at the headlights, I think those are headlights that you have to take the panel off to get a headlight change or something.
I have one question that I think has not been fully committed. And that is the very last sentence of the briefing note. The new box on T2 may
Yes, may.
be salvaged for use on the replacement vehicle. And I'd like to have a definitive answer on, before we take any movement any further on this. I'm not prepared to throw away 5,000, $6,000 box.
And if we have to spend another 5,000 or 6,000 to put it on the new box, then that's an entirely different, entirely different picture. So, and I did have that highlighted as well to question.
I wonder, can we park this issue until we get a firm commitment from staff that this new box is totally salvageable to a doors on a new vehicle?
Mr. Mayor, I would never guarantee that it would be salvageable and be able to put on another chassis. That's a 2020 versus a 2006, that was probably somewhat custom fit for.
Yes, but, again, I wouldn't ask you to make that commitment, but I think there are, there are salespeople that can make that commitment for us. So, and the truck is parked right now, as I understand it, is it not?
That is correct, it is at a service.
So, we can park the issue and park the truck until we get a firm understanding that the box has another use, or at least the salvage value of the same $6,000, 5,500. There's no recommendation here, can we treat this as information for this discussion?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, it was information to help with the discussion in the capital projects.
Yeah.
Because it is on the list.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to move on then. And so then, I'm at 7E, which is deferred capital projects. And I've got page 32 in front of me here, and I just have one question before the discussion starts. And that is, on this deferred capital projects, the third, no, the fourth item down is replace pickup truck. And then, the budgeted amount is 35,000. And the note is, it was included in the 2020 operational budget with finance payments. So, my understanding is that we did replace that pickup truck. Okay, so, it's not really a deferred item then, right? It's, the issue has been dealt with?
Correct.
Okay, so let's take that one off the schedule here. Because we have a new vehicle in place, and we're financing it with payments. All right, now, there's a number of issues there. The first is drawing plans for the upstairs, drawing up plans for the upstairs renovation. The proposed budget amount in 2020 was 10,000. It's not going to be included in the draft 21 budget. Do you have a nodding of heads understanding that that's what's happening? A nodding of heads?
That's correct.
Okay, I have to know that everybody's following here. Recreation, we have the Cardinal Pool Filtration System. It's a $70,000 item, it was a $70,000 item in the 2020 budget, and it is included in the draft 2021 budget. Discussion, if any? It's there to look at then when we get to the 2021 budget. Next is the dehumidifier for the arena. It's a $15,000 item, and it is also included in our draft 2021 budget. Stop me if there's any of these things that shouldn't be. And the next one is a brush head for the high hole. It's a $50,000 item in 2020, and it also is going to appear on the 2021 draft capital budget. The other three I'm not going to mention because they're not going to appear on the 2021 budget. So, just those three items. One, two, three, yeah, just those three items coming forward as deferred capital items. Does everybody understand that?
135,000.
What is it?
135,000.
135,000, all right. Now, it's deferred capital coming forward. Now, when I asked the question at the last meeting, I think the treasurer indicated that those deferred items get carried over into 2021, and the budget amounts go with them, but it starts all over again, right?
Through the chair, no, I think you're actually confusing that with WIPED projects.
Yes, I am, you're right.
So, these are not WIPED projects, these were originally in the draft 2020 budget when we were discussing capital. And council at that time decided that not to fund those projects in 2020.
All right.
At all.
Okay, fair enough.
And in the case of the pool filtration, the only thing that council did do is they decided they would take 30,000 and put it into reserves so that that project could be done in 2021. And that's why staff has reinstituted that particular project in 2021 with a $30,000 draw from reserves.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so we can move on then. And so, we'll move now then to 7F, which is the draft 2021 budget review. And there are seven different reports here. And the first report is on page 35 and 36, that's the draft budget summary. And I'm going to look at that one first, and then I'm going to skip directly to number three, which is the executive summary that provides an explanation of the impacts. And that executive summary appears on page 41, 42, 43, 45, and 46. I'm going to go directly from there after we look at the draft budget summary report. So, I'm on page 35. And on page 35 is the draft revenues. And I'm going to start by asking a few opening questions with regard to the projected revenues. And the first question is, under administration, the draft revenue is projected as 928. And I know if I went to the detailed budget, I could get the source of that 928, but just quickly, can the treasurer, just tell me what the main source of that is? Why is it so much over the 870?
In administration?
Yeah, that's what my sheet shows.
That's...
Oh, that's expensive.
That's operating.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 yeah. It's the revenue sheet that I wanted to look at. Where's the revenue sheet?
That's in a separate item.
Yeah, that's in a separate sheet. My apologies.
It's in your item three, which is your detailed summary.
Yeah, that's on page 37, right?
Right.
37.
Yeah, okay, yes, okay, and the revenues are there.
Yeah, the revenues have increased by 93, 875. And the bulk of that increase is, that's COVID safe restart money. So, we had leftover money of COVID, and so, there's additional revenues allocated in administration for COVID-related expenses and wages.
Okay, and that's where the 938s come from?
That extra money comes from.
Now, are there any other questions then with that draft summary? The expenses, going back to the expenses side?
Which page are we at?
35 again.
Oh, yeah, okay.
What about the? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Go ahead, the 2020 budget column. If we recall, we struck the 2020 budget between December and February. So, the 2020 budget column is what you might call a typical annual budget. In other words, what we would have expected to spend. It was late January when recognition of the virus pandemic was upon everybody. And there were pretty rapid declines in many things in our society, as you know, stock market hit a normal low. So, if we look at the 2020 year-to-date actuals, those are budget numbers that have been impacted by the pandemic. And the 2021 budget, draft budget numbers, are the numbers that our staff has put together based on the information they have available to them. And then, the last column is the variance to the 2020 budget. I guess my position is that we should consider the 2021 budget to be a non-regular budget. And by that, I mean, this pandemic is not going away. We're going to be with, it's going to be with us for many, many months. And it's going to have an impact for that many, many month period. So, when I looked at this, when I got this report, rather than compare it to the 2020 budget, I looked at the 2021 budget compared to the actuals. And there's a little bit more, in my view, that's revealing by doing that. And makes, and it basically elicits certain questions. So, if I may, point out a few possible highlights here. And I'll go down to, and it's not numbered, but I'll go down to near the bottom where it says Recreation Facilities. The original budget was $1 million, and we spent 996,000. And next year, we've planned for $1,113,000, an increase of, over the 20 budget of 110,000. But in actual fact, it's an increase over the actuals of the 2020 of 116, almost $117,000. So, the question that elicits is, where are we going to spend that money? Arenas are closed, without, probably no likelihood of reopening. The swimming pools will likely not be open because of social distancing requirements. A lot of the other facilities that we would normally function with in that, in that bubble of recreation, will likely not be available to the public in the same way as they would be in a normal year. And thus, you question, like, why are we budgeting for these higher levels? When maybe we should be looking at something that has a little bit more of an austerity budget in? Like, if the arenas aren't going to open and the chances are up next to zero that they're not, that they're going to open, why would we take the ice up and, you know, kill the lights and stuff like that? Like, there's savings available right now. And if we're going to be faced with, um, no vaccinations and, you know, for, for younger people, until sometime late in the, late summer, maybe for early fall or the late fall, why would we open a pool? So these are, these are, like, in my head, these are the kind of questions that this brought out to me. Now, I don't have answers. All I'm saying is that, you know, we shouldn't just cast a budget. It has, of that column comparing, comparing the variance of the 2021 to the 2020 actuals, on that one page alone, the increase is 323,000 dollars.
Okay, can I just?
Of, of some, it's more than that, actually, because I didn't take all the lines. I took only the bigger lines, the ones that impressed me. So I opened that up or add that to the discussion because I think we, you know, maybe if we're not careful, we get off on the wrong foot.
Can, can I just use your comments as a sort of a, a springboard to, to go back to staff for a second? So, so to the, to the CAO. So when the staff was putting this together, did you look at it from the perspective that Mr. Bradley has just iterated? That, you know, in all probability, uh, a lot of our facilities are not going to operate this year? Did you look at it from that perspective?
So if, 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 if I may, Mr. Mayor, like, leading up to the December 26th provincial shutdown, which was just, we're in two weeks now, coming in, we, we, we were in green and yellow and our facilities were operating. Uh, we've been working on this budget for, 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 for some time. And, and some of that increase is related to that there is some additional staffing that needs to be done in order to, to do some of that screening, maintenance in, in the process of keeping those facilities open. Um, now, certainly, things, things have changed and, and some of those outlooks have to be, uh, reevaluated. One thing that I would caution is that the 2020 year-to-date actuals are not complete yet. So to be able to say that there's this much savings or, or this much difference between budget to, to, to the year-to-date actuals, uh, you, you, you can't use that yet. We'll, we'll, we'll have invoices coming in for the next month related to 2020. So, and it's just something to keep in, to, to keep in mind. But yes, some, some, some of those, uh, items have to be looked at uh, based on, uh, on, on this most recent outlook, uh, related to the pandemic.
I know, but.
That, that, that it is somewhat unlikely that the, that the arenas will open in relatively short order.
Right, and that gets us.
And I'm certainly not prepared at January 6th to predetermine whether our pools in the summertime will open or, or not. So our, our, our plan is that, that, you know, at this particular stage is that we're anticipating that, that the pools will open.
Why would you take that position?
Well, because I'm anticipating that from the province that there will be a large portion that should have the vaccine by June or July.
Based on what?
Uh, based on the data that I've, that, that I've received.
What is that data?
What is that data? Well, it comes from the Provincial Emergency Operations Center, actually, and medical professionals.
Think about it today, the doses, we're going to get around 50,000 doses sometime this week. We had about 39,000 doses, which are tailing up right now. They're almost finished. 50,000 doses of, of that vaccine will do 25,000 people. Okay, they're going through a priority list. They're doing, you know, frontline workers, et cetera, et cetera. Prisoners, probably prostitutes before, you know, people like me get it. But anyway, I mean, logically, I don't see how you can come to the conclusion that you'll have a summer program of any kind. The adults that are with the children don't want to be with the children because they're afraid that they'll either have it and pass it to the kids, who have about a 99.99% survival rate. Uh, and this is why the schools are closed. The teachers are the ones who don't want to get the virus. The kids probably might carry it, but they're not going to, um, you know, be seriously affected by it for the most part.
Yeah, and I think the larger picture, you know, I think that we understand the larger picture here is, is how do we position this budget, uh, in a responsible manner to, uh, how do we position this budget in a responsible manner to shepherd our resources? I think that's the larger picture that we have to look at here. And, uh, that's why I didn't want to get too deep into the first two reports because, uh, you know, and I, and I referred it, I, I think I'd like to go there right now. I think I'd like to go to page 41. Because on page 41, which is the executive summary, we know that this budget is predicated on a 7% tax increase. Uh, and right in from the very first paragraph, uh, the draft 21 budget is currently projecting a deficit of 413,000. This equates to a 7% increase in the tax levy. Now, I have a little bit of problem with the next sentence because the next sentence is, the overall taxation revenue has decreased by 81,000. It's not the taxation revenue that's decreased by 81,000, it's the overall revenue. The word taxation should, in my opinion, should not be there because on page 33, we get told that we will have an additional 6,757 in tax revenue. But I do understand that our overall revenue is decreasing by 81,000. So, I mean, the, we got two issues here, and I think they're tied very closely together. On the one hand, we're looking at a 7% increase in tax levy. And on the other hand, we're budgeting, or we've got a draft budget that proposes to operate programs as usual in an unusual situation. The arenas, I don't think we're jumping to any conclusions at all to say that the arenas will not open, uh, between now and June. I don't see how they can. It's, I mean, we're coming up, uh, Saturday was actually, Saturday was actually the, uh, end of the first two-week period where he said he would reevaluate where we were. Well, we all know what happened on Saturday and Sunday. Numbers just got worse. And we all know from the various media stories that we've heard today that there's some pretty serious lockdown stuff coming in the next period, quick period.
I can help with that.
Go ahead.
Earlier, earlier when, um, we were sitting here, I got an email for the pre-announcement tomorrow. Uh, so there'll be an announcement tomorrow with, uh, additional measures that are going to be implemented at 1:00.
At 1:00 tomorrow? There's going to be what, sorry?
There'll be additional measures implemented tomorrow at 1:00. So and I have a ministry meeting at 12:00, so I'll find out a half, but not by much.
So that'll be additional measures. I mean, it's not going to be any loosening up here. So, I mean, just from the point of view of the arenas, they're definitely not going to be opening. So the question is, why is our budget? I mean, we, we, we've got to consider this from both points of view here. I mean, first of all, I don't think this is any time for a 7% tax increase. And secondly, I don't think it's any time to be looking at this budget as business as usual.
If, if, if I may, in all, in all fairness, Mr. Mayor, that in, in, in early December, when, when budget like this is getting worked on, our arenas were open and if you would have.
Right up until the Boxing Day.
Correct, so, so, so you, if you, if you would have told me, I don't know why you were budgeting not to have these arenas open, we, 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 we would be criticized. The, the information, when this was prepared to come to this committee was that the arenas were in operation.
Yeah.
The arenas are not in operation and this is a first blush at a 7%. Staff is not recommending a 7% increase.
No, I, I understand that. So I'm just wondering, what's the best, uh, most efficient use of our time here right now? I mean, I, I don't want to sit here and go through these, this budget line by line, knowing that the situation has changed drastically since this was prepared.
So, so I think that probably, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if we can go, go through the executive summary, just sort of get an overall view. And then if, if committee wants to give some kind of direction back to staff to, uh, revisit some of, some, some of those areas that, uh, that you, that you feel, uh, need to be looked at, then I, I think that might be a good, a, a good starting point.
Okay, so let's look at the next paragraph. "The draft budget has been developed to maintain the current level of service that is being provided." So I think that's the exact issue that we're talking about. Should we be, uh, should we be trying to maintain the current level of service? What, what is the feeling around the table here?
Well, I don't, um, is somebody else going to jump in? Mr. Mayor, I don't think that we should be setting that as our objective.
Okay, so let's give some of the others an opportunity here.
Speak up.
Well, you can't really say it, say it this time what we're on budget. In my opinion, a budget right now is for, we're never going to set a, set a budget until March likely anyway. I don't think we need to be, as far as recreation goes, I don't think we should even be bothering wasting our time on operational budget right now. That's concentrated in our capital budget, but we're going to do one way or another. Pandemic's not going to affect our capital budget. We're either going to do something or we're not going to do a capital project. We can look at our operating budget for PUC and one thing, thing another, because that's not going to change. We're still going to maintain our, our road. Recreation is really the only thing that we got that we may be talking about service. Do I think we budget for pools to be open in the summer? Yes, because they may be open. And if we don't budget for them now, and, and government gives us approval on the first of June, the pools can be open. We haven't budgeted for them. Are we going to still keep them closed even though the government says they can go, can open? And we haven't budgeted any money to run them? Let's wait for a month on the operation of recreational anyway and move forward with stuff that we know we can control. Our operational budget, budget for a lot of things aren't going to change. Our capital budget is just going to change for whatever we decide we want to change it.
Okay, so the counselor is suggesting that we get to the capital budget and take a quick first look at it. Counselor Cameron.
It's been in the news that by the end of January, there's going to be 6,000 new cases per day. I, 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 I have, I have to, I have to agree with Counselor Hunter that let's see where recreation goes. Let's, let's see what happens before we, before we can't do anything with, with, with recreation. This is, this is going to be a very, very difficult budget year to, to budget for. But, yeah, let's, let's go with the things that we know we can control right now.
Well, one of the things that you control, you can control, and I'm going to say this, one of the things that you can control is the cost that you're spending just right now on the arenas.
Oh, oh, I, I, I totally agree. Our arenas are closed.
Yeah, but you're still spending money like this.
We are, we are, and, and perhaps it's, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a management decision whether, whether to, to close the down, turn off all the lights and get rid of the, get rid of the ice.
Well, with all due respect, it's not a management decision. It's a management, uh, it's a man, up to management to bring a recommendation forward, but it's a governance decision. Go ahead.
I, I really think, you know, I mean, yes, there's new restrictions coming, um, you know, tomorrow, but, but I do think, you know, like, last time I looked at our numbers, we're still in the green. Um, if not the yellow, you know, emergency on yellow, but they haven't changed it back yet. But, but our numbers are still pretty good, uh, considering. Um, if on the 25th, um, the province, um, reevaluates uh, and decides that what they did in June with their regional approach, um, is to begin happening again in areas that are green, such as the north and, and maybe the east like us, um, we may see our arenas open again. So, um, you know, and I'm still holding out hope that, that that's, that that's the case and we'll still be able to, you know, have, um, you know, some of the things that we offer, uh, available. And I, I think, you know, making a decision tonight, you know, and closing that down, to me, would, would be wrong. Uh, two weeks of waiting to the, to the 25th is to see if, how much things change uh, and exactly what, what new lockdown measures happen tomorrow. Um, you know, and what, what the, the new guidelines are. Uh, I think it, it's at least worthwhile waiting another week. So I'd certainly agree with, with Counselor Hunter about, you know, maybe pushing the operations, forcing down the week to, or down the road, you know, another week or two weeks to get past that date and see what changes and, and have the capital discussions while, while they're in front of us. That's not really going to change that one.
Where are you, Counselor Dilawal?
I would like to get ready for a big shutdown at our arenas. I'm not, I, 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 I will agree with the two weeks. But I think we should get a plan right in order, right now, in two weeks.
If, if, if I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the, the, those kind of discussions are happening at, at, at our level right now.
Okay, good. Okay, well, let's, uh, let's go to the capital budget then and see what we can see in the capital budget. Um, I'm just trying to, uh, just give me a second here to look. So the capital budget analysis comes on page 48. And 49 and 50. So let's go to 48. And 48 shows the list of capital items that are on this list at the present point. And, uh, let's just have a look. So the, the refit of the town hall, we understood that that was a, we're going to apply for a grant, if the grant comes, we're going to do it, if it doesn't, we're not. And so the impact, impact on taxation is nil. The fire department capital, looks like there's nothing there. Stormwater management, there's dispensable drainage for 30, 300,000, all of which will come from taxation. Conne Road pipe lining, 45,000, all of which comes whipped forward as a work in progress from last year. Is that correct?
Five, five thousand.
If, if I may, 40 of the, the 45,000 estimate would, would be work in progress.
Right, and so 5,000 implication on the taxation. I see there's a whole column missing from my sheet here, I didn't notice it until now. Last two digits are gone. Johnstown Drainage, 125,000, full impact on taxation. Do we want to do Johnstown Drainage? Is that, is that predicated on the presentation that we heard? Uh, what is the detail of that? Let me give a quick look here.
So if, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if, if, if we could have an opportunity to speak on, on the Johnstown Drainage and Spencerville Drainage. Uh, at the, the first, uh, capital project funding analysis, we had an expense of, of 75,000 put in under Johnstown Drainage, sort of as a, as a placeholder. Uh, you received the, the presentation by Mr. Mr. Kevin Holly, Gird Hallaway Group. I believe it was the 14th. I believe it was the fourteenth, December fourteenth, that that he'd come to make the the presentation. Uh, staff has looked at it and selected a a a project, um, which kind of encompasses, uh, Mary Street with that oil grease separator and design work with respect to a Mary Mary Street from County Road Two to Second Street and.
Sepia from County Road Two to Second?
Yes. As 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 well for the at least for the for the engineering work on that particular part, which we're which we're estimating to to be in around that, uh, hundred and forty five thousand mark for for consideration. Um, with respect to the Spencerville drainage, there was, um, it was mentioned that we had originally had thirty thousand in there uh, to to do some engineering work. It was, uh, recommended that that we try to do more than just engineering work, actually do some physical, uh, stormwater management and and road work in that area. The three hundred thousand is is sort of a placeholder right now until we get, uh, some additional estimates from 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 our engineer with respect to to that, which hopefully will be, uh, forthcoming in in the next few weeks. But tho- those are two sort of additions and increases from that from from the original first draft. And I believe that there is, uh, uh, resurfacing, uh, around Charles David Street at at a hundred and twenty thousand, which was also, um, an addition from that first round of.
Okay, so I'm, uh, the so I'm back and forth between page forty eight and page fifty then, right? For stormwater management?
Eventually.
Is that correct? So stormwater management shows us four hundred and seventy on page forty eight. And on page fifty, what am I seeing? I see Spencerville drainage, three hundred. Connel storm pipeline, forty five K. Johnstown drainage, seventy five K from twenty twenty and plus fifty K.
Okay, that's the one twenty five.
And get, uh, well, that gets me to, that gets me to a total of one third, no, twenty twenty one proposed is four seventy.
So you so you add four thirty on on page forty eight.
Right.
From taxation, but if you add the forty thousand from work in progress, that's where you get your four seventy.
That's correct.
Fifty, yep.
All right, so that's the detail then on page fifty. All right, so then we go down. The next item is the waste disposal site. And that was a capital expenditure of fifty just for the engineering work. Do we really want to do that work? I I'm reluctant to do it when we're not getting pushed by the province. I know at some point we will, but that hasn't happened yet.
Chief Minister, Jim Philbin.
May I pardon?
They can't just keep putting it off. It's been put off for six years now, so.
Well, it was only put off in the sense that it was, it it in the sense that we were told that at some point we would we would probably need to do something. But we haven't been, I mean, there's been, there's been nothing said in the last six years and the system is working the way it's working. I mean, I'm not saying it's perfect, but at the same time, do we need to spend a hundred and thirteen? No, that's not right. Uh, do we need to spend fifty thousand dollars? That's the question. I mean, again, looking at it from the point of view that something's got to give here. But anyway, let's go on and just make sure we all understand what these items are. Under recreation capital, there are three items. Uh, Cardinal Pool filtration system. I got to find this now on my on my other sheet. Where is it? Recreation capital. Parks capital, arena capital, capital pool repairs, Cardinal Arena capital and South Center capital. So Parks capital, thirty thousand. Capital Pool Repairs, seventy five thousand. Fifty thousand for the Zamboni, and I think we're committed to that. And forty six thousand for dehumidifier, one one this year and another in twenty twenty two. And then transfer thirty thousand from recreation reserve amount that was budgeted in twenty twenty. So I think we all understand that the fifty thousand has to happen, but what about the filtration systems at the Cardinal Pool and the replacing of the dehumidifier? You have any comments there?
If we don't, uh, if we don't open the pools this summer, I I I I don't see the value of putting the, uh, putting the filtration system in.
But again, that's.
It's just going to sit for a period of time before it's.
Well, again, that's something that we don't have to make this decision. I mean.
We can wait and see what happens.
We can wait, yeah.
Yes.
What else is on here? What about this Spencerville Arena dehumidifier, forty six thousand? Again, if we're if we're going to put into place a a program to to shut these arenas down, uh, is this the year to be spending that money?
You're going to open them up and fall.
Maybe and maybe not. But again, we can wait. We can hold that decision. Then economic development, there's the, there's the waterfront project phase one and phase two, and I think there's a commitment of some money there. There's an eighteen thousand dollar grant there. That's at state. What's the total cost on that project? Two hundred thousand. And, uh, so we go on with the Public Works brush head. Brush head for High Hole. And replacing the GMC half ton, fifty five thousand. I think. Comments here as we go along?
I just wonder, comment on, uh, under, I guess it's, uh, wastewater filtration, I guess they call it, for Johnstown coming down from the drainage, coming down there. And then in the meeting for South Nation, we have agreed through a lot of their material in the last while and there's grants available there for sort of water going in the rivers and stuff for purification and stuff. I wonder if there's any chance of us getting any grant for over that because this water being directed down into the in the river, is there any kind of a capital grant available from those South Nation sources? Because that's what this system is. It's supposed to be to plant light and stuff, the filtration to the water before it gets to the river. That was what explained the purpose of it was. So I wonder if there's any money, capital money available through the conservation for these.
Okay, well, we'll leave that question to the C A O. And then when is your first, um, when is your first contact with South Nation?
Twenty first. I've had two training sessions with them. First meeting is on the twenty first. I hope to call the director there before that and see if you can forward me some a copy of their, they've already passed the budget, of course, we know, it's already been built for that. If I can get a copy of their budget where they're planning on.
No, they've delivered a copy of their budget here.
Have you seen that copy?
I I, uh, through through the mayor, I do I I do have a copy, so I can I I I can provide it that to you.
But I've noticed in there, there is grant money available there for.
Well, they seem to be very good at digging up grants.
Yeah, so I just wonder if.
Well, that's the that that's separate.
The committee, Joe, get appointed on or not. I'm going to try to get on the Clean Water Committee because of the problem we've had here, plus the drainage in Johnstown and stuff. And I I I'm guessing that's the committee that likely has the forty over the grants for the water, but.
Well, okay, so let's leave that one hanging. Let's leave that one hanging till we have more information there. That'll be a, that'll be a good project to work on. Okay, now let's go down then. We're we're back down at Public Works again. Sort of lost my place here. Brush head for the High Hole, I don't see that.
Yeah, it's forty eight thousand.
Yeah, where is it on my list, though? Here it is here on page forty nine. It's under equipment. Uh, proposed budget is a hundred and three thousand. Purchase brush head for High Hole at forty eight K plus replace GMC half ton, GMC one ton for fifty five K. So there's that GMC half GMC one ton coming up again. So we've agreed to park that until we have a firm firm indication that 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 box can be used. So we've got the brush head for forty eight K. Are we still going ahead with that one? Is that is that's good use of money as opposed to as opposed to hiring that done?
Well, I think that's been given a long run to pay for itself, probably over four four years above. You you pay that much of of in the contract work for it. I mean, and I'd suggest this year, if we're going to take budget position, if I had to pick between putting the dehumidifier in in the rink and doing the brush head, uh, we can't rent a dehumidifier. The lower one breaks down. We haven't haven't got it. But we can go ahead and rent it for the brush head for for the years.
Yeah.
I'd consider seeing us go ahead and put the dehumidifier in and have to rent one more year or maybe we just cut that. We don't rent as much till we do play as much brush in this year, so.
Okay, so that's a possible there. Okay, so now we're on, I'm just working my way down the list here. Latimer Road, we know that that's under discussion. Uh, it lots Latimer, that's whipped forward from twenty twenty. There's still fifty four thou? There's still fifty four thousand to come, eh?
Correct.
Can't remember that. But that's.
Guardrails.
Oh, guardrails and line painting.
Uh, guard guardrails and, uh, slurry coat, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, yes, right.
Slur- slurry coat on on that and line painting.
Okay, all right. So we're going to finish that, obviously. Bridges and culverts, Ventnor Bridge, a project coming forward from twenty twenty, fifty three thousand. And that's just finishing off a project, right?
Correct.
And then engineering survey costs, et cetera. And now here we're we're back at Cedar Grove Road again, from Fraser Road to the boundary with Augusta, a hundred thousand dollars. And you see, that's, we discussed that earlier in tonight's meeting, where that other money might come from. Um, but anyway, let's, let's leave that go. We again, we'll have a more information or a different fine, a final decision or a final approach to that issue later on. Now we get down to the resurfacing roads. So we got Charles and David resurfacing at one twenty. I think we've all agreed to those at one twenty. We've got Judy Place at forty three, zero three, zero eighty one. Now, are we all committed to Judy Place? I just wanted to signal that I'm not really committed to that job, Judy Place, because it just doesn't get the traffic. I know it's not the best shape, but it doesn't get traffic. I need some discussion there.
I'd like to get it done. I mean, we we, the Hudson Place was a.
Hudson Crescent.
Hudson Crescent, we had there last year, kind of. If we don't do it, it won't get done.
Well, Hudson Crescent, Hudson Crescent is done, is it not?
Yeah, that's the one that we we ran into problems with with, uh, um, on Judy Place.
Yeah, but it's done now. It's not on the list.
Hudson Crescent, all I'm saying is Judy Place is still there.
Yeah.
And if we don't do it, to me, we won't get it done. I know it's it's a low, it is a low traffic area. I agree with you. But we have Hudson Crescent all the way done and myself, I'd like to get it the, uh, if we can find the money to get Judy Place.
Well, you can find it if you want to ask the taxpayers for it.
I'd like to keep that in myself.
Okay, then the next one is Ann Street.
That's got to be done.
Point one of a kilometer from Shanley to the end of the road. Don't even know where Ann Street is.
That's in bad shape.
Last last street on your left going over to the Village of Cardinal.
Okay, yeah, I know where it is.
Hall Street, then Ann Street. Ann Street is is bad. There's no question about that.
Yeah.
I'd consider seeing us keep Ann Street out and leave Judy Place off for this year. That is another time.
Now, what would you what'd you just say? Leave Ann Street in?
Yeah.
Take Judy Place off.
Judy Place this year. We did two major portions of it last year. I think we got a spread there. Our work around, we got keep concentrating all the time on one area.
Okay, so there's some, there's some traction with that concept. Uh, I would kind of agree with that concept, but only because of of the dollars that are involved and how we're going to make this thing work. And 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 then Commerce Drive, that's in at one ninety, where am I here? Commerce Drive is in at a hundred and ninety one thousand. Pulverize, add gravel and pave. Now, uh, two covers to replace the person. Doesn't show the length. Uh, County Road Two to end of the road. Okay, now that goes back to the dark place where it turns right, right?
Correct. It's a point six kilometers.
Points, oh, yes, there it is there, point six kilometers, right. Okay, all right, so I think we know that one. And now Rooney Road, point four of a kilometer from the MTO garage up to County Road Forty Four, a hundred and seventy one thousand.
It's in bad shape.
Yeah.
Very bad.
Yeah, section needs resurfacing now, pulverized, da da da. So that gets a tick along with Commerce Drive. Edison Avenue, again, now that's just to the top of the hill, is it not? Point seven kilometers from County Road Two. No, it isn't. It's from County Road Two right around to Commerce Drive.
I thought that was the one we discussed last time. We just go on the park way up where we.
Yeah.
Down.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what I thought too.
Yeah, but but it looks like it's all the way around.
Yeah.
So did we not, did we not discuss that one?
I thought.
And do we not agree that that would, that we we felt that the lower section of Con- of Edison from County Road Two up to the top of the hill where it turns left was the was the bad area?
Yeah, the bottom there where the trucks were turning.
Yeah.
How many places broke broke up? It's just not even up as far as the top of the hill.
That's right.
That's right. Couple of other yards up here is all it is.
Yeah.
It was one spot up the hill that's been patched.
Yeah. Okay, so can we have another look at at Edison Drive then, please? Either the description is wrong or the money is wrong.
Maybe maybe the situation is that from County Road Two to Commerce Drive, does Commerce Drive make the turn and come east?
No.
No, it's the other way around?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if if I if I may, Mr. Mayor, just looking back at the previous minutes, it, uh, members requested staff to review and prepare information to justify resurfacing a proposed section. I think with Edison Avenue, uh, it was, it's it's not to pulverize. I believe that one is a mill and and paved to, uh, to to get that repaired before before it goes much farther and it would be required to have a fill a full rebuild. So. So, but I'll, I'll, I'll have staff check the distances, and just to make sure with respect to that, um, going all the way over to Commerce Drive.
Okay, and then, so we'll leave a question mark on that one. And then First Street, point one-four kilometers from Walker to Shanley.
That's, uh.
Where am I?
There, there are worse streets, but that, that one is, that one is in the list, Mr. Mayor, as well.
Okay, so now it says, surface, resurface in one to three years, but for now, we're gonna, well, now, how do I read this? Pulverize, add gravel and paint with fifty millimeters, so what's the twenty-eight thousand do?
Twenty, uh, twenty-eight thousand would do that work.
Well, it, well, it's got resurface in one to three years.
The pulverizing and gravel and pave.
It's not gonna be done for twenty-eight thousand?
That's for sure. Pulverize, gravel, maybe, but.
How long a street is?
It's, uh, it, it's not, it's not very long.
Okay, so there's some unanswered questions on this sheet.
It's, it's, it's point one-four kilometers.
How do we do it then?
Not a, not a pulverize and add gravel and pave for twenty-eight thousand?
Point one-four kilometers.
Well, then, why's it got resurface in one to three years? I was under the impression that what we were doing here was trying to hold it for one to three years.
No.
No?
That, that, that's, that, that's not correct.
Well, then it's, then, then let's take the resurface in one to three years out. So, all we're doing is pulverizing, adding gravel and paving with fifty millimeters, that's the prob- that's the description, right?
That, that is, that is the description as I understand it.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, so for clarification, comparing, and I know these aren't apples to apples, but, but to compare, uh, First to Walker at point one-four, at twenty-eight thousand, and then we're going back up to Judy Place again, and to Ann Street again, uh, why is there such a difference between the twenty-eight, the forty-three and the fifty-six?
I can see fifty, I can see Ann Street.
So.
Is that culverts or?
So, I, 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 I'm going to say a, a combination that, that there may be, that, that there may be additional base repairs required on, on, on those two, uh, sections, but I'm not sure if, uh, if, if Dord has any additional information at this time, or?
I can't, I didn't think after that, I, I was under the same understanding.
I, I, I do believe that it's additional, um.
Yeah, we gotta have, we gotta have clarity here, on what we're talking about.
Depending on, uh, uh, pulverizing and add gravel, that's kind of misdemeanor, because you could be add, add a little bit on, uh, Ann Street, which has, there is no real heavy traffic on it, it could be very, maybe two inches of gravel going, going over, or another street, the base is bad, that might be six or seven inches of gravel even.
But Ann Street's double the price. Ann Street's double the price.
If I, if, if I, if I may, uh, if, if you look on page, if you look on page fifty.
That's where I am.
Okay, so you'll, you'll, you'll see beside Ann Street, it's full reconstruction, complete with granular base, four hundred and fifty mils of gravel, and then your fifty mils.
Right.
Where we would, we, we, we would probably be adding a lot less, uh, gravel with respect to, to, to First Street. So you've, you've got, you've, you've, ba- ba- basically, you're rebuilding the road.
On Ann Street, too?
On Ann Street.
Okay, yeah, great.
I said it was a base, but you're, it's gonna double the cost for you.
Well, and of course, there's a quick difference in the length, too.
'Cause you, you would be, uh, if I, if I'm not mistaken, you would probably be putting three hundred mils of, uh, of, of B, and then about a hundred mils of A before you, you, you top it with the, uh, with the fifty mils of asphalt, where, uh, First Street, you're, you're pulverizing, you're probably adding uh, fifty to, to seventy-five mils of A, and then paving. That's, that's where your, that's where your big discrepancy is. Yeah, is your, be- because you've, you've, you've got a full dig out that you've gotta haul out.
Okay, well, these are the things, so we, we gotta get our head around them.
And, uh, trying to add those notes to, to, to help.
Okay, um, so I don't, I don't think there's a heck of a lot more we can do with this tonight, um, other than try to set some dates for some other meetings. On the, uh, on the executive summary page, I think, I think that's where I saw it. Actually, I'm wrong, uh, it's on page thirty-four. The treasurer's asking us for proposed budget meeting schedule as follows. A date and time for budget meeting number three, they're regarding this as budget meeting number two, and, uh, looking for a date and times for budget meeting number three, four and five. Are we prepared to give the staff some dates here right now?
Sure.
And I'm just wondering. Okay, well, let's have a look. Now, I'm gonna ma- I'm gonna suggest some dates, and then we'll see where we go from there. Uh, now, the first date. There's no point having it too close to today because the staff needs time to do the work. What about the nineteenth, which is a Tuesday, at six-thirty? Is that too soon?
I'm good for that date.
Okay, can I put six-thirty on the nineteenth for budget meeting number three? Now, I guess the focus would be on the capital. How do you wanna handle the operating budget? I think we need more time for the operating budget, I really do think we have to get a better sense of where this year is going. Go ahead.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I think with the, with meeting number three, with, with council, admin, policing, conservation authority, there, there's a number of those that are, are probably a little easier to, 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 to discuss with respect to operating.
Okay, I get your point.
So I, I, I think that we can, we, we can look at, uh, at, at the operating on, on those particular, uh, areas on the nineteenth.
Okay, so January nineteenth, six-thirty. All right, now, the next one after that.
That's operating, though?
Well, it's on, it's, look at page thirty-four, that's what we'll be dealing with.
Council, administration, police and conservation authority, cemetery is planning to come in with the.
Right. All right, now, budget meeting number four is fire, protective services, building, bylaw, recreation and library. Now, here's where library and recreation comes back in again. So, we'll do a brush by, I guess I would say, uh, with recreation on, on budget meeting number four. And I'm gonna suggest a date for that budget meeting number four. Does anybody have a date in mind? Okay, then I'm gonna suggest the twenty-sixth at six-thirty. Um.
It could be better February second.
Actually, Mr. Ma- Mr. Mayor, there, there's an alternative there, we could, we could potentially flip meeting number four and five. So in, in meeting number four, we could look at public works, storing, waste disposal, curbside collection, and then natural drainage, and then push, uh, push recreation to, 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 to budget number, uh, number five, if that suits the committee.
Okay, that'd be probably a, a better use of time.
Expelled.
Twenty-sixth, I can't make it, Mr. Mayor.
I can't either, twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eighth?
I can't do any of that week.
Oh, that week is out?
Yeah.
Okay, so now I'm flipping up to the week, first week in February. Now, we have CDC on, on the first Monday of February now, right? At six-thirty?
That would be on the first.
That's on the first. So can I use the second?
The second would be good.
Not for me, the fourth.
The, the fourth would be okay?
The fourth works, yeah.
At what time?
At six-thirty?
Yes, that works for me.
Okay, um, fourth. It's a Thursday?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's budget meeting number four.
And for number five on the list.
Yes, yeah.
Good point.
Six-thirty again?
Six-thirty again.
All right. It's done?
Six-thirty, you said? Yeah?
Yeah.
All right, now. Well, let's take those, let's take those two.
Yeah, set, set another one that I can.
Yeah, we'll set another one on, that will be, that will be, what did I put, February the fourth?
Do we have the one on the fourth?
Do we have what?
During the day, it won't be six-thirty.
So, i- i- if I may, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, the, the, the week, the first week in February is, uh, collective bargaining.
Oh, yes, okay.
We have some dates, but, uh, I'm going to anticipate that by, by, by Thursday, late afternoon, hopefully, we'll, we'll, we'll be good for six-thirty.
Okay, all right. Okay, so that puts us two meetings ahead. All right. Now. Any further suggestions as to where we're going here?
If I may, if I may make one more comment, Mr. Mayor, just, just for, uh, for committee's consideration, and it, it's just with respect from, uh, uh, reserves, for, for, for instance, in, in twenty-twenty, we took a hundred and seventy thousand from reserves to cover some of the capital projects, and in twenty-twenty-one, right now, from, from our perspective, we're only, uh, taking thirty thousand, which was, uh, discussed in twenty-twenty for that filtration. So there's, you know, if you, if you, if you, if committee is, uh, interested in, in transferring roughly the same amount as they did in, in twenty-twenty towards capital, there's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars there. And it's just, it, it, it's just for, it's just for thought as we work through the, uh, through, through the budget process.
Okay, so, uh, so you're looking at page fifty-two, are you? Uh, that's not the good page to look at, because it doesn't show what we transferred out. You're referring to the executive summary, are you?
I, I, I am referring to the executive summary of page forty-one.
On page forty-one?
Yes. It would be the, uh, sixth paragraph. It starts, in twenty-twenty, a total of a hundred and seventy thousand was transferred from reserves, compared to only thirty thousand proposed in twenty-twenty-one.
And Mike, Mr. Mayor, do you feel, uh, treasurer, we have a hundred thousand dollars the last years when we're putting back into the industrial park land, reserve for the five hundred thousand was taken out. We had a hundred thousand again going in this year, this fourth year or the third year that that's going back in?
Oh, you caught me, um, I'm gonna say definitely the third, could be the fourth, but I think we have till twenty-twenty-two before we're finished paying back that five hundred thousand.
This year and next year.
I believe this year and next year.
This is the fourth of, of, of five.
Sorry, I lost where the word.
So, sorry that we've been, that we've been transferring a hundred thousand into reserves, uh, to, uh, to, to pay back for the, the gravel to surface program that we did, uh.
Yes.
Three, three years ago, so we, we, we have a payment, a hundred thousand in, in the twenty-twenty-one budget, and a lot of the other hundred thousand in twenty-twenty-two out of that, uh, we, uh, we paid.
So just as a public can, can consider, if we're gonna take, take budget year, that money borrowed, borrowed from ourself that we set off, take a year holiday from that payment?
Oh, let's, let's clean it up, and then we know, we know we're clean. Twenty-twenty-two's an election year, don't get that.
I'm not worried about the election year. I'm just worried, worried about trying to keep the budget here, here at around four percent, just to see if it works out.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because I think that's our next discussion. There, what kind of direction can we give the staff about that? You're thinking of four percent?
I see a lot of the cities and councils are coming in with this year, because they're, we've, we've lost any, any gain, gain from impact, because they didn't reevaluate.
We get no phase in?
No phase in, plus we lost a hundred thousand dollars in transfer payments this year, so.
What are, what is the rest of council on, uh, providing some direction to staff here? Come on, guys, you gotta talk, for crying out loud, that's what we're here for. Keepers, you can't sit and look at the floor, you gotta make decisions. No, I'd like to see it come in at three. If we can do it, possible. You can do anything, I mean, it could, it could, it can come in at zero or minus twelve, if that's what you want, but for crying out loud, you gotta make the decisions to make it happen. It ain't gonna happen magically. The decisions come right here, not there, here.
I think for, for myself, um, having, uh, an increase while offering less services, um, I'm gonna struggle with that. So a four percent increase with, you know, no, no arenas operating, no pools operating, uh, I'm gonna struggle with that a little bit. So, so some of that will depend on those things for me. You know, a two to four, sure, but, but not with pools not operating and, you know, with arenas closed, and it's a service decrease.
Okay, I see your point, and that's a good point.
And also, uh, the, the Village of Cardo is going to get another levy on airwater and sewer. I realize that it's only sixty dollars a year, but it's still sixty, sixty dollars a year, uh, so I, I would strongly leave four percent.
You haven't spoken all night?
Two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent?
I'll go against anything above that.
Mr. Robertson? How do you read the tea leaves?
I think, I think it's gotta be more than two and a half percent.
What?
Well, the loss of revenue, tell me this, has anyone laid off because of, say, a reduction in the number of people at the arenas or other places?
That decision comes.
On the other end?
That decision comes here. Have we laid anybody off? Maybe we should be thinking about it.
I mean, if you got no revenue coming in from arenas, and people are hanging around, what are they doing? Switching off the lights and turning them on in the morning?
If, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's not something for open session discussion.
Well, I think it is. I mean, because what we're talking about is what Counselor Dullabal referred to here a few minutes ago, when he said we should be putting in plan. Now, I grant you, uh, you indicated that that's being discussed at the staff level, and, you know, up to a certain point, we wait for staff recommendation, but, and I, and I also understand totally that a lot of this preparatory work was done, uh, prior to Christmas and prior to the Boxing Day close down, I understand that. But, this is, we only have, we can only deal with the information that we have in front of us, and the reality on the ground. And those two don't balance right now, so we got another week or so to try to get them in balance. But, I mean, I think you can hear what people are saying, I mean, it has to, it's gonna have to be dealt with.
The province does not provide the same level of service in this environment that it does historically. I can't get my driving license renewed at the Service Ontario Centre.
Neither can I.
No. Okay, I can't get my, I'm over eighty, so I can't get what my driver test evaluation done. My wife is the same physician, her eyes are failing, you know, I have to make the decision, so I'm not getting a level of service there. Why would we be, expect our taxpayers here to get the level of service?
I think we have, those are the questions. Those are the kind of questions that I think we have to deal with, and, you know, I mean, but, we, we, staff has, staff has given us something that was created in a different time.
Yes, I understand.
And I, and I think they need time to. And I, and I think they need time to reassess the comments that they've heard here tonight, and, and that, those, those comments will be reflected in the next two meetings. But I think before we get to the next two budget meetings, we have to deal with these larger issues that you're hearing tonight, so...
The other thing, Mr. Mayor, if I may, is that we have to be, we have to be flexible, and that means we gotta be sitting on our, in the starting block. And so that's why, you know, I'm, I have no problem with the 2021 budget, assuming it was a normal year. But it's not, so we need to have, uh, the end, you know, really on the firing line and ready to go. If we reduce stuff, then somehow we gotta have an alternative that if something happens and all of a sudden the pandemic disappears, we can switch like that.
Yes, the, 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 the ability to be flexible, I think, is, and, and you know what? We do not have to build that, uh, we do not have to build that... How do I say, how do I wanna say this? We do not have to etch in the budget how we're gonna do things, but all we have to do is provide dollars to go either this way or this way. That's, that's where our, that's where our challenge comes.
If you look at the, at the commercial field, Home Depot switches like that. When they declared the shutdown, you couldn't get in the store, okay? Prior to that, you could get in, all in one day.
Yep.
So corporations are adapting, municipalities gotta adapt.
Okay, enough on this, uh, I think you've heard some discussion, go ahead.
Just one, ju- ju- just one more, so a- a- am I reading committee that they would entertain service reductions?
I think you, you're not only reading them, I hope you're reading them.
I, hey, I, I, like across, across the board, specifics?
No, 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 come on now, uh, with all due respect, I think you've heard the discussion. The, the discussion basically has focused on the arenas in the first term, but in other words, the January to June term. The question about the pools in the summer term, the question about the recreation programs in the second term, the question about the arenas in the third term, and the ability to be flexible with the pool arrangements and the arena in the second term. Those are the issues. This, and the, and the issues resolve not just around operations, they resolve around, around manpower. Because when you come right down to it, right now, our major expense in our arenas is manpower and electricity. And I mean, I don't know what, I, I haven't seen the electrical bills, but I know electrical bills is the main, is a big cost on the arena operations. I mean, I cannot believe that if we get a January electrical bill in 2021 that was the same as our January electrical bill in 2020, kilowatt hours wise, and if they're the same, something is drastically wrong. And we won't know that till we get those two bills. But I'll tell you, when we ask for the hydro bill for January of 2021 for Cardinal Arena and Spencerville Arena, compared side by side with the hydro bills for January twenty, and they're the same, somebody's gonna have to answer for it. Somebody's gonna have to answer for it. I mean, I can't put it any other way.
And with all due respect, Mayor, I, I, I believe that council and staff managed the pandemic in 2020 quite well. And, 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 and I'm a little concerned with some of the comments being, being made. I, I, I think that, um, o- o- overall, we managed that situation quite well, and we will continue to manage quite well together, not in opposition.
I don't think there's any argument with what your statement is, but you're now facing probably, uh, curfews, okay? So that's quite possible. And, uh, we don't know how long it's gonna go on. And I guess, following on the mayor's comment, uh, I would look at, at service reductions where it's gonna cause the least pain. Like, you guys know better than I do where that would be, and that would be, you know, be a, a decision you would come back and recommend that. This is the one that we feel is the less painless. Do this first, and then maybe progressively as we proceed, you see, if they lift everything, bang, we can go back to normal. That's why I think we have to be light-footed.
Okay, all right, uh, let's not beat this horse to death. Uh, we could go on here all night, and I think we just need time, and, and hopefully, the picture will become a little bit more clear as we go along. I'm going to move on to, uh, item number eight, uh, which is council inquiries or notices of motion. Now, does anybody have anything to bring forward here?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Uh, first one is, um, I'd like to know if we could have our council meeting January twenty-fifth at two P M. Instead of six-thirty P M, just a suggestion.
So, uh, that's a major change, uh, so first of all, to the clerk, is that a possibility?
Uh, through the chair, it is early in the game, so it is possible. I can make, uh, notes on our website as well as our social media newspaper ad.
And it has to be, we're all, now using the recorder in times as well?
Correct.
Okay, so does anybody have any objections to the January twenty-fifth meeting being at two P M?
Not at all, I, I'd actually like to say that I'd like, I'd like that.
Okay.
I'm okay.
Okay, so can we put that in at two P M, council then?
Good, thank you, and I have one more thing, Mr. Mayor, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I brought up in September, we had a problem on twenty-one seventy-nine County Road forty-four with a school bus. Twenty-one seventy-nine County Road forty-four with a school bus picking up children in September?
Yep.
And I asked if we could go to, to the, uh, counties. Um, I, I don't see anything, no signs, or, I don't know if anybody can give me a little bit more information. There's a real bad accident there in December, and, uh, nothing to do with school buses at night, but there was almost another incident with the school bus in December. Could we see what the counties can do with that corner? And that's, uh, by, what is it, uh... That last road, Newman Road, is it?
Newman Road.
Right there at the corner, it's very, very bad, and we got two houses on the east side who picked, or the school bus picked children, it's up there, children up there now, the school bus. Before, don't think there was, now there's children, and it's a bad, bad spot. We have to get the counties involved now.
Well, the school board can always move the stop to a less dangerous position. Is it at the, if it's at, if it's at the junction with Newman Road, the, the bus can pull off the road on Newman Road?
Yeah, no, it's not, it's, it's down Foman, but it's close to it, there's no question about it. I just asked in September, I'm asking again because I was asked by the people who live along that road.
I wonder how many bus, different buses stopped there?
I would think only the one, because you're young kids. And I could be wrong, because it's two different schools too, so you...
It could be, and it could be a high school as well.
Well, I don't, no, I don't think so, it could be two public schools. But anyways, there's a problem there, I'd like to see if the counties can get involved in that and take a look at it. That's all I have.
Well, you leave that with staff, because I think that's, uh, if it's a posting of signs, uh, Mr. Drummond, who is our sup, is our road superintendent, uh, has authorization to look after those kind of things. Anything else here under notices of motion? Okay, uh, so now I'm moving on to the mayor's report, just a few things. Uh, if anybody is interested, uh, Mayor Scott has arranged a tour of the factory or the construction facility in Brockville. It's building four of these teeny tiny homes, uh, under contract for, I believe it's Habitat for Humanity. Anyway, the date is Friday, January the fifteenth at ten o'clock. If anybody would like to, uh, join me, let me know, and I'll inform Mayor Scott that I will be having someone with me.
Ready, ten A M?
Ten A M.
Do you mean Mayor Baker?
Big part?
Mayor Baker or Mayor Scott?
Mayor Baker, no, Mayor Scott. Mayor Scott has arranged the...
Athens, not Brockville?
No, no, the, the facility is in Brockville, uh, and Mayor Scott has arranged for us to tour the facility. I know it's in Mayor Baker's, Baileywick, but Mayor Scott seems to have the connection with the folks that are building the, the tiny homes.
Okay.
Whereabouts is it, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, no, the location escapes me, if you contact me, I'll give you the email from Mayor Scott that provides the direction.
They're building indoors of E E C.
Yeah, they're building them indoors.
Indoors of the E E C, right? E E C?
That's the E E C.
Department of Education Center?
Yes.
Yeah.
They're building them, but they're not building them in their own building, they're building them in a building that's owned by D and D Tree Services, I think.
Right, yeah.
Mister Brooks?
Yeah, Mister Brooks, yeah, Mister Brooks.
Off California Avenue, is it?
Uh...
I don't know.
Don't get me confused with Brockville Streets.
Mister Mayor, copy in.
Well, send me an email.
My name's...
It's, it's January the twenty, no, January the fifteen. At ten in the morning, we have to be there.
It's Friday.
Okay, now I'm going on, E O R N, the Cell Gap Project. So, uh, let me put it this way, the inaugural meeting for the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus was on Thursday, Friday. Uh, so as an outgoing warden, I attended the first day with, um, uh, Mayor Haley. The second day, and there was a presentation from E O R N on the first day. And so the Cell Gap Project is going ahead. They had two respondents to their RFPs, they're in negotiations with their preferred respondent, and they will, but they will not announce the name of that first respondent until actually after the contract has been signed. Now, in addition to that, you know that the, uh, E O R N had proposed this, uh, this project called Gig Up, Gig Down. And it's a one-point-something-billion-dollar project for Eastern Ontario. Now, the problem that has occurred is that the feds have established a fund of money which will pay seventy-five percent of project cost, and the province has introduced a different program called Icon, which will pay twenty-five percent of costs. And the original intention was that these two projects were, these two programs were supposed to work hand in hand, but somehow they got out of sync, and they're no longer working head, hand in hand. So the two programs are entirely on their own now, and so the update on the, so it appears that the E O R N has an awful lot of work to do to try to get this gig project mounted. In the meantime, we should be hooking on to whatever, uh, intercom, the telephone, telecom internet provider is coming to us. And along that line, I just wanted to just give you some update on where we are here. In the village of Spencerville alone, Bell has made a, a proposal to the C R T C for a fiber-to-the-home project in Spencerville, and that will connect two-hundred-and-sixty-eight homes in Spencerville by fiber right to the home. That project has been submitted to C R T C, they're awaiting response, and they don't have any idea when they'll get the response. In the meantime, they've also instituted a project called Wireless to the Premise, which is a fifty-down, ten-up, or fifty-up, ten-down, uh, service, and that comes from a series of new wireless transmitters that they're just putting, that they're just rolling out in the last week or so. Two towers are already equipped with the transmitters, and the tower on Currie Road is the third tower, and it's just gone into phase one rollout this week. So that will give fifty-up, fifty-down, fifty-up, ten-down by wireless to the home. In the meantime, in, in, okay, sorry, and that will, um, that will service everything that can be, uh, that, that's line of sight from that tower, which includes as far north as Sprouseville Road. In the meantime, they're also proposing a fiber-to-the-home project for all of Johnstown. And that project is, they hope that project will be funded under Icon, the provincial program, which pays twenty-five percent of the cost. So Bell is just waiting to get clarification, uh, on whether that application has been accepted. Now...
What's up in, in Johnstown, Mr. Mayor?
Well, it's...
Is that fiber or is that wireless?
Both.
Oh, in Johnstown?
Yes. If the Icon proposal is accepted, it'll be fiber to the home in Johnstown as well as wireless to the premise from the Currie Tower.
Where's that, Currie?
Hey?
Where's that?
Currie Road.
Just at this...
It's the unopened road allowance.
Oh, the one on, on County Road two there.
Yeah, that goes north.
You can see it.
All right, so that just gives you a little bit of an update there. Uh, really, the unfortunate part about this is that the federal program doesn't mesh with the provincial program so that we get a large gig up, gig down for all of Eastern Ontario, at least it, unless, until E O R N does an awful lot of extra work.
And we don't have any time limit on this, right?
Uh...
Like, you don't know the time?
No, we have no times.
Like, they need it now.
Uh, yep.
That's just trouble.
Schools closed, we got schools closed, they need it now.
Well, the first proposal, uh, the first intake for Icon is, uh, what'd you tell me? February the fifteenth? No, was it you? Wasn't you. The first proposal for Icon, I think, closes, today's the eleventh, I think closes on January the fifteenth, but Bell has already submitted the Johnstown project into that first, into that first intake. There will be another intake in February and another intake in March until all of the Icon money is gone. Icon is a, is a provincial program, and the, uh, the, the other project, which is called the Universal Broadband Fund, is a federal program. All right, uh, everybody's aware of the fact, I think, now, that we've got a, a Roma delegation with Minister Sarkaria on January the twenty-fifth at twelve fifty. You have to be registered for the Roma Convention, but we'll hold the delegation here in this meeting. And the last thing to just give you a quick heads up, the Royal Bank, and I think I might have already reported this, but just wanna make sure, the Royal Bank has indicated that, that they will not be putting a Royal Bank ATM machine in their old building, which has now been purchased by the guy that's gonna open the pharmacy. And he has really been royally jerked around.
And why?
We don't know that answer to that, so I can't, I can't go any further than to say it's not gonna happen. The, in the meantime, the owner of the pharmacy, who hopes to be up and running by the first of February, tells me, uh, he's working hard to find another provider of an ATM machine to put into that lobby, so... Whether he finds a private company that will put in an ATM machine or not, that, that'll be up to his resources. And then that's about it for my report, there's no press here for a question period. We're gonna have a short closed session, and, uh, I'm looking for the motion to go into the closed session. Somebody have a motion?
I got it. Me myself, segment, Captain Mayor, this is, uh, committee proceeding into closed session at eight forty and P M in order to address the matter pertaining to proposed pending acquisition or disposal of land by municipal or local boards, specific to industrial land, and the closed session dates November ninth, twenty twenty.
Those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, and we're gonna go directly into this closed se-